Good evening. This is an informal meeting of the Gardner City Council on Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five. I'd like the clerk to please call the role.
Counselor Brooks. Counselor Craig Coromier.
Present.
Counselor Darren Lawards.
Present.
Counselor Harder.
Present.
Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Haglen. Counselor Kuzinskas.
Present.
Counselor Mack.
Present.
Counselor Tisoni. Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Present.
And President Tyros.
Present. For the public watching this evening, we are meeting informally tonight for a presentation of the FY two thousand and twenty six school budget. The school budget presentation will be conducted by Gardner Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Mark Pellegrino and Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Mark Hawke. If there are any questions from the city council during the presentation, it will be at Dr. Pellegrino's discretion to entertain those questions and any discussion. Dr. Pellegrino, please begin when you're ready.
Thank you, and thank you for having me here to discuss this year's budget. The first thing that I want to point out is if you look at the first enrollment slide, it talks about how from two thousand and twenty one to two thousand and twenty five, we've brought up more than three hundred students in the Gardner Public Schools, which is phenomenal. But also, when you look at our reducing budget, when a student gets, um, needs about eighteen thousand dollars to educate them, that's about what our poor people expense is. That's about a five point four million dollar increase just because of the increases in enrollment, let alone anything else in terms of raises or inflation. So it takes into account just the additional enrollment. Then if you continue on with the enrollment, if you look at the demographics, they're changing. So if you go to the next slide, actually, I put down these numbers just to show really what the difference is in high needs rather than just percentages. With the hard numbers, um, you know, you're looking at, um, what is that, a five hundred student, almost a four hundred and twenty five student increase in our high needs population. High needs is defined by the state as any, as any student who is, um, is either low income, a student with disabilities, first language not English, or an English language learner. So that's not double counted, so some students are in multiple categories. But that's gone up pretty drastically. It's almost a third of what, or actually a little over a third of our high needs population was back in two thousand and fifteen. And if you look, we've grown again about fifty percent in our numbers of low income students. Our students with disabilities has gone up a little over a hundred students, which translates, when we look at a special education teacher, the case load is typically around twenty five students. So a hundred students would mean four teachers. Now, that's not typically just happening in one grade, so it happens across all grade spans. So it's just additional work that's already on our system. Um, our first language, non-English, increased threefold plus, and our English language learners, um, times two and a half. So all of those particular populations need additional services, and that's why it's important to note that they're, they're growing populations in our city. But in our schools, we have to provide additional services for the, um, for our students to be able to access their education. Go to the next slide. Out of district costs, we've been trying, as you know, one of the things, one of our, um, main goals is to keep Gardner students in Gardner. And our art district, uh, our, our out of district students, we've been trying to make sure that they're getting the services within our schools with the supports that they have with their teachers and their registered behavioral technicians, whatever they need, to make sure they're able to stand with their own community, with their friends, they're able to go to their friends' birthday parties, they're part of our community. So we've been trying to keep the number of students leaving our districts for out of district placements down. This year, because of the number of the, the, the increase in our students with special needs, we've had a lot of students coming into our district who are already on out of district placements. So we're, we've gone up two million dollars since last year in terms of the out of district placements.
One thing to note on this slide is, this is for the current year, FY twenty five. FY twenty six is still unknown because what makes up the out of district placement costs are the, um, the circuit breakage revenue, the out of district budget, the tuition collaborative budget, the spent transportation budget. That makes up about two thirds. The missing third is the IDA two forty federal funding, which is unknown until September, October. So that's why if you, if you look at twenty six, um, guessing, and that's what it really is, is a guess with the two forty grant, we're going to be about the same, if not just under that six million dollar figure.
Um, this next slide is, again, one of the things we've really worked on in Gardner, which is to keep Gardner students in Gardner. When I first became superintendent back in, um, two thousand and seventeen, as you can see, we had two hundred and eighty three students leaving the district. So those are ascending, um, ascending, um, school choice students, and our receiving was a hundred and nineteen students. Now, in two thousand and twenty five, we're receiving two more students than we're sending. So that's a wonderful, that's a wonderful thing, again, keeping Gardner students in Gardner. However, the tuition doesn't always reflect that. So the tuition is what we're paying out, and the reason that it's typically higher for, um, for our students who are, um, going out of district is because typically for any UTECA or any of the online programs, it's eighty five hundred dollars per student as opposed to the five thousand dollars that we take in for our brick and mortar schools.
Ninety seven, twenty seven for FY twenty five.
Oh, it went up. This is it, correct.
Dr. Pellegrino, do you mind repeating that number? I did.
Yeah, it was, um, what was it, ninety two?
Ninety seven, twenty seven.
Ninety seven, twenty seven.
Thanks.
And the online students, is that just high school?
Uh, no, it's six through twelve.
And has that always been the case, or was that from the pandemic?
Um, no, that's, it's always been the case that it's been higher, but it, it's gone up from about six, um, six thousand something to over seven thousand.
Ninety seven, twenty seven.
Thank you.
Are you, are you finding that this is taking advantage of TECA, people who were homeschooled before then, taking, going to TECA at, at the higher grade levels?
Yes. Just a reminder on our budget process and how we do this. So principals submit, and principals and directors submit to, um, to us, um, budgets that justify any expenses that they, that they're asking for, things that are above a level services budget. We also ask them to cut, and each school this year cut about two hundred thousand dollars from their, um, from their salaries. And so they cut positions. And then we ask them to, to figure out, well, what positions do you absolutely need that you don't now have? And they list those out as well. They submit those to us because we want to make sure that when they say they need a position that they don't yet have, we want to make sure it's a need and not a want. So they, um, they meet with, um, Mark and I, um, to kind of go over those, those lists. And then we all get into a room, all the directors and principals, and we start to rebuild our district with the first, most important position that was cut. Usually it's a kindergarten teacher, um, that goes into budget first and then, but sometimes a need that we have might actually displace a position that we currently have. So we build that budget back up based on our actual needs, and it's the needs of the district, not of the needs of a particular school. So we found this is a really solid way to make sure that we're truly looking at our budget each year and that we're putting in the most important positions first. And this will be the last slide I go over before I turn things over to Mark to talk about, um, the numbers. But this is the additions. Now, at the very top, you see, you'll see budget restorations and adjustments. So a restoration is what the building maintenance position is, that was a cut position, that we're trying to add back in because we need that position back. So we have added it back in. The yellow positions, notice that says FTE two for each one of those, that's four positions, two paraprofessionals and two RBTs, which is a registered behavioral technician, working with ours typically in our substantially separate programs for our students with special needs. We had to add because of IEPs, um, because of students' individual education plans. We had to add those positions in this year, so it was not a question. It was required by the students' IEPs. So those were added into the budget. The other positions that we're adding in for FY twenty six are kindergarten teacher, um, so that's a, I'm sorry, kindergarten, special education teacher, and ESL teacher, English as a Second Language teacher. These two positions are necessary because right now with kindergarten, the needs of kindergarten, we actually had to get on a waiver this year because of the, the intense needs that our students have and the balance of the ratio of students with special needs to our not students with special needs. So we actually have to add a position to make sure that, um, the students with special needs are not more than fifty percent of a classroom. Yes?
The two in the yellow, the pair in the, um, RBT?
Yeah.
What schools were those added to?
I believe those were all, all the elementary. And the ESL teacher, just to let you know, as you saw, our, um, students who are, who have English as a second language and are learning English, when you're a level, so students are categorized into the level one, two, three, or four. Our level ones and twos are supposed to be getting at least ninety minutes of instruction. Because of the number of students that have enrolled in the district, we're nowhere near that at the elementary schools. Adding a teacher will allow us to actually give them the, the necessary minutes. And when I say necessary minutes, those are the recommended minutes by the state. They're recommended, they're not required, so they're not added in as the special needs were, which are required by law. But it's extremely vital that we, that we make sure the kids are reading at that, especially at those early grade levels. So that position will be added to the elementary school, yeah.
So we meet the requirements, but we want to meet the recommendations?
Yes, yeah, there are no requirements.
Okay.
There's no, like, minimum requirement. Ninety minutes is the recommended when you're level one or two. Again, you're, that, those are students with the most intensity, they're, they need a lot of time learning those basics of English.
So there are no reductions of staff according to this slide? You're not?
No, I'll, I'll talk about, I'll talk about reductions in, in that stuff afterwards.
Okay, okay.
That's not here.
It's not on this slide versus?
Correct, that'll be toward the end, yes. Okay? And that's, I think, all I can say about. I'll pass things over to Mark.
Next several slides, excuse me, they have a, a lot of numbers on them. Not easy to read, but show several years of the salaries in the various payroll accounts. So there's a one point six million increase year over year. Not all of that is just a salary increase. Last year, we had six hundred and twenty thousand dollars being paid for out of the school choice account, which is one-time money. That money has been moved over. There's about five hundred and twenty thousand that is covering the increases in salary steps and lane changes. And then the rest of it is made up of additions mid-year, like, yeah, saw the additions, the mandated additions, if someone moves into the district and they have a one-to-one pair or RBT or something in their IEP, that's added because we have to. So additions, replacements, um, make up the bulk of the rest of it.
Mark, can I ask, um, twelve percent cut in school administration, that's usually an unusual cut. What would have made you cut school administration by two hundred and sixty nine thousand?
I'd have to look that up.
Okay.
My guess is that it's moving from, because the way these are accounted for, my guess is it went from school administration into, oh, that's what it was. So, ah, the, there was a group of specialized teachers that went from one account to another account. I think we put them in ESL. We took ESL out of administration and put them into regular education. Expenses, same slide, lots of numbers, eight hundred and sixty six thousand dollar increase. Roughly half of that is made up of transportation. Uh, there's a lot of contractual expenses that increased that make up the bulk of it, but the bulk of the budgets were level funded except for the contractual increases. The costs that don't apply to net school spending, this is, um, funded by the city side, but paid out of the school side budget. We went up to bid for a regular transportation, and that's the increase that does not include the, uh, the wish to want the hope of an eleventh bus because we do have some buses that, um, are full. The spent transportation increase was bid, I think it was not last year or the year before. So the revenue projection, this shows the chapter seventy, the required net school spending by the city. The mayor had said three hundred thousand over net school spending, so we included that in the budget. So that gives us just shy of three point six million dollars in new money. So where did that money go? On the left, you'll see the almost three point six million dollars. The minus hundred and sixty thousand was we were getting the, I had several names, the homeless money, the migrant money, the hundred and four dollars a day money for the folks that were staying in the hotels. That is no longer, so we used that last year, but we don't have that, we have to stream this year. So mentioned the one point six million in salaries, the expenses, the additions that Mark went over, the non-net school spending, that's the transportation increases, that's a negative number because it's also included in the expense number. And then the largest increase is the indirect cost. So that gave us a budget deficit of four hundred and seventy four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. This is just a quick scenario showing how that indirect cost really was unexpected and kind of kicked us. Same numbers, same deficit, four hundred and thirty four thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollars. Mark, did you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to show that, um, one of the things that happened in, well, we all know, the pandemic happened, and, um, we didn't receive ESSR funds, which were monies from the federal government, and they could be used for anything, and a lot of that was to support the, the city. And we were about a million dollars above our minimum net school spending, right? The average, by the way, um, is forty six percent over minimum net school spending across the state. That's the average amount that people spend over minimum net school spending. For us, we were a million dollars above, which was excellent. And what happened was when we had that extra fund, we actually supplanted some of the funds that would typically go for the city, from the, come from the city and from the state, um, to make sure that we maintained our positions. And the idea was, we wanted to make sure we maintained positions without maintaining so many positions that would hit a cliff. A lot of districts in the area, as you know, have been cutting drastically because they overcompensated, they got a lot of one-time money and hired a lot of teachers and a lot of extra, a lot of extra folks, and now they have to cut folks. So we added what we believed to be what was necessary, but not so much that we'd have to have major cuts this year. And so what you're seeing here is I, I tried to put in the line of best fit. Mathematically, um, somebody might be able to prove me slightly wrong on this, but I tried to show what our minimum net school spending funding was, and then the line above it is what our, what our above minimum net school spending would could, would have continued to be at if we continued above minimum net school spending. So in a way, our, you know, overall budget actually decreased in some ways in terms of what we have for real money. We used to be a million dollars over. At some point, we need to, we need to start moving to that, and the mayor and I have talked about this at length. And he talked about adding three hundred thousand dollars above minimum net school spending this year, which would offset, you know, some of the, um, some of the costs we have, obviously. We're looking to get to that point, we're about a million dollars above. Right now, um, what happens is we actually get penalized as a, as a city when we're where we are. Now, actually, this is on another slide. You, um, is this, is it, is this confusing to anyone, or does anyone have any questions about this?
No.
Okay. To the next one? Oh, am I missing something?
By way of comparison, the Monty Tech budget was six hundred and six thousand, four hundred and ten over net school spending. Their foundation budget student is one thousand, four hundred and eighty eight. So on a per student basis, that's four hundred and seven dollars and fifty three cents over net school spending per student. Gardner Public Schools' foundation budget is two thousand five hundred, so doing that same math with four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty three cents times twenty five hundred students, to be comparable to Monty Tech, we would need to be one million, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty five dollars over net school spending. So one thing about it is that both our schools, but we don't treat them the same.
But the difference is we also can't, we have no say over the Monty Tech budget. We can't really, we, well, we can't, um, they present it to us. We really, you know, as a, as a city, have never, have never dug our heels in to say, no, we're not giving you that much, have we? I mean, at least not, I haven't.
Yeah.
You have, but I haven't remembered since I've been on the council. It seems Monty Tech comes, they present their budget, we vote it as is, and you're right, it's, 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 it's not equitable. Because.
Is the council voting?
Not yet. They have not voted on it yet.
So state laws that they still need to have, cities and towns.
Right, exactly. But if, if, I guess my question is if the city guard just says no, you know, what league do we have to stand on? I mean, if their budget's their budget, they, they present us. So, yeah, so. That's, you know. But it is inequitable. I'm just, I, I support your statement.
If I can, I'd like to interject on that slide, um, and I'd like to offer, uh, Dr. Pellegrino, you had said the mayor committed three hundred thousand dollars to above net school spending. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a statement?
Uh, you know, the city had traditionally been funding net school spending over and above for several years. That's something that we were, you know, we hope to continue, we hope this trend continues moving forward. One of the things that, you know, a couple of things that play into where we are today. The blue lines, if you see the substantial increase that you have between a couple of the years there too, when the Student Opportunity Fund, uh, Student Opportunity Act went into play, we got a substantial increase in funding from the state, but our costs also went up a little bit. At the same time, you heard earlier that last year's budget had around six hundred thousand dollars in school choice funding, uh, in it. That's one-time money that we're trying to get out of the budget. You heard that there's a budget gap this year, about four hundred and seventy, uh, four thousand dollars. That's the plan for that gap this year. But what it is, is we're in a long-term plan to slowly reduce that one-term money that we're putting there. It's too much for us to be able to do all at once. So the funding shifts from one pocket to another. So that's why we're hoping to be able to continue that over net school spend moving forward, but that, you know, costs are being covered elsewhere so that we can move away from a more sustainable form of funding rather than continue with a one-term, one-time funding that may be up in the air if, you know, the account goes down one year versus another year. But that's the, the goal, is to get the amount of one-time school choice money that's going in the budget down over time and at the same time build up that over net school spend number back to where we were before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, um, the next slide, I think, would, um, so just, I just highlighted this, this spot. This is right from the state's website. And what it shows is, um, they, they calculate actually the expected contribution from the city. And what they do is they, there's a, there's a line there, line twenty one, talks about the shortfall from the target. So they have a target amount for the city. And so if you're short, um, anywhere between one percent and two point five percent is a certain, what is it?
It's a one percent penalty if it's between two and a half and seven and a half percent. And a two percent penalty if you're over seven and a half percent shortfall. So Gardner's at five point seven two percent, so it's a one percent. They don't call it a penalty, it's a added increment toward a target.
Good point. So right now, the, the added amount is one hundred and twenty eight thousand that they're doing this year. So again, if we don't continue to increase, so doing that three hundred thousand above will add to the amount that, um, it moves towards our shortfall. We'll still be in a shortfall, but not as much of a shortfall.
So Counselor Mack and Thibault Munoz on the public welfare committee?
Yes. With, um, ca-
Counsel.
Counsel.
Sorry. So you may remember this slide from, um, the Monty Tech presentation, but just to go over it real quickly for the others. The, on the side on the left, the two million, three hundred and forty five thousand, this is the two thousand and twenty four equalized valuation according to, um, the state. And then there's the uniform property percentage, which, as its name suggests, is uniformed and is, uh, the same number for all districts. You multiply those two together and you get the local effort for property wealth. Then there's the two thousand and twenty two income of five hundred and fifty two million, which comes from the Department of Revenue. And then again, another uniform number, the income percentage, you multiply those and you get the local effort from income. Add the two local efforts together for the sixteen point two million, that's the combined effort yield. The FY twenty six foundation budget is forty point three million, the maximum local contribution. No matter how much the mayor wants to put, he can only put up to thirty nine million, eight hundred and fifty four thousand, two hundred and ninety one dollars. So then you take the lesser of the two, which is obviously the sixteen point two million, um, and then they put it to a percentage. So that means the sixteen point two of your foundation budget is thirty three point five seven percent. Your target deed share is sixty six point four three. Moving over to the right, the twenty five required local contribution is twelve point eight million. The municipal revenue growth factor, again, from the Department of Revenue, is four point five one percent. Multiply those, so thirteen point four five three million is the FY twenty six preliminary contribution. And then you fall into the numbers that Mark was talking about, the shortfall is two point seven million. You have the one percent added increment of a hundred and twenty eight thousand, so that's how you get the required local contribution. Given that it's in the news every day, uh, the other considerations that are just mentioned, these are our federal grants that are baked into the budget. So you see some are larger than others, the Title I grant, eight hundred and eighty thousand, all the way down to a thirty five thousand dollar Title III grant. And then, uh, this just explains what they are. Every federal grant we get, we are required to share with Holy Family Academy. That's why you see like HFA Tutor, HFA PB, HFA PD. So HFA is obviously Holy Family Academy. And it tells you what the grant period is, so these all end on the federal fiscal year in September. And I feel confident that ninety percent of these will return. There's a possibility about the Title II, whether maybe combined with something else to go over completely, but I think that's one of the small numbers.
So these aren't affected by any federal cuts?
Not as of this moment.
I don't know. Right. That's where your confidence goes from.
Title two, I believe Title II.
Well, I just want to, we, we just get a lot of questions from people concerned about the federal climate and cuts, and they hear all these things, and I just want them to know, really, for the public, how it affects us locally or how it currently is or is not or could. Another question on that too, so Holy Family students are not considered out of district placement, or they are?
No, they're not.
They're not considered out of district placement. I just want to, again, make that clear for anybody listening or watching. Thank you.
Central school, let's share our federal grant.
But our Title I, which is the largest grant, is in, in Gardner Public Schools, it's about eight hundred thousand dollars in salaries, typically for paraprofessionals and support staff in the classrooms.
And so then in terms of, I guess, another question that's related then would be for, um, the, the school choice, they're not considered a school choice? HFA students are, or they're not? Okay, thank you.
So with the assumed three hundred thousand dollars on interest spending, that leaves a four hundred and seventy four thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollar budget gap. What the school committee voted on was to add that four hundred and seventy four thousand in for a total logic of thirty seven million, six hundred and seventy six thousand, five hundred and forty eight dollars, which would represent a zero dollar deficit. So I want to make sure that's clear. With the three hundred thousand of over net school spending, there is still a four hundred and seventy four thousand dollar budget gap. The school committee voted to include that four seventy four in there. So that would mean it would be, um, seven hundred and seventy four thousand, two hundred and thirty one dollars over net school spending to get to a zero dollar deficit.
And for the four hundred and seventy fourth, for the four hundred and seventy four thousand dollar deficit, we'll have to have cuts, which would mean, um, two of the positions we, we would cut. One would be, um, the, the maintenance physician that we were trying to add back in. And we would also cut, um, it would be a mental health counselor at the high school.
Dr. Pellegrino, where does the balance of that four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars come from?
All from one-time monies, whether it's grants, um, school choice revolving fund.
From school funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Would that, the cuts wouldn't necessarily be, uh, positions that would affect students, correct? They could be administrative positions as well?
The, the mental health physician would, would impact students.
But how, would there be administration, like central office? Would other, would other departments be affected by cuts besides direct student services?
No, it would just be that, that one position would be the one that was cut, and then we would cut the maintenance position as well that was going, we were trying to add back in.
When you presented last year to us, I remember because of the transportation contract coming up, that the warning was about a 1.2 million dollar possibility, possible increase in transportation. According to your slide, it was, it was much lower than I anticipated. I think it came, it was about 100, you know, it went up to, you know, 800,000, but, so the transportation negotiations went much better, I think, financially than was anticipated because I believe it was 1.2 we were warned on last year for increase in transportation.
I don't remember what the number we were thinking was, but it was a, what is it? It was like an 18% increase year over year for the regular bus, which was still high. But I think it was actually included in council, because you might know better, the, there was an outside section in the budget that the House voted on to form a committee to look at the school bus, because it's only one bidder, and they are just jumping up 15, 20, 25% year over year. There's only one bidder on almost every school bus transportation bid, so they were finally looking into that.
Just another, and this is more for the mayor, so the school department, a school committee voted for the 37 million. On our orders from the mayor for the budget season, it's without the...
474.
The 474.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor, that's the, the amount that doesn't include the 474 because that's, appropriating funds of the school choice revolving account is voted school committee, not the budget order, because the budget orders are raised and appropriate. So it's the language with that that's there and the way that chapter 70 law is written. So that's the difference that's in there.
I appreciate the clarification from people.
Anytime.
Thank you. Just my final question is, in this, not knowing, without upcoming contract negotiations for any of your unions, specifically as the staff, like other city employees, have faced, you know, tremendous increase in insurance and stuff, so this is without even planning ahead for those future negotiations, correct? That net, coming over net school spending in the future would be very important to support the continuation of staffing and services to our students.
Most definitely, most definitely. We're not, we're negotiating with our largest union, the GEA, units A and B. We're not negotiating with them for not this coming year, it'll be FY twenty-seven, that will be renegotiating the successor contract with them.
I just think that's something important that people have to realize, that, you know, that, you know, an increase in funds is going to have to happen at one point or another over net school spending.
And just, just to be clear, the increase in salaries for this coming year is 2%. The, the union took a 2% raise, as did my administrators.
And that's what my point was, 2% with, after facing, I believe, at least a 24% increase in health insurance. So that, that's a very important thing for the public to realize, that 2% is, doesn't even, is not even a cost of living raise, never mind what they've already have to have had to pay out. Thank you.
Director Hawke, on the expenses slide, quite a few numbers back. I think I saw a substantial increase to, is it central administration or information services, 48%?
That is a position that was under the schools before, was a data analyst, and that position is now under our tech services.
Okay, so it's a shift.
A shift, yeah.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments from city councilors on the topic of tonight's informal meeting?
You mentioned a mental health counselor cutting at the high school. You only have one there? There's just one mental health counselor there? Are there?
It's, she's, it's a social work position, so it does wrap around, she is the only one that, she's not the only one that does that type of work. We also have Tina Russack, who does the same type of social work for health services specifically, but this burden would need to be picked up by our school councilors and other staff ability.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the people at home, the 1.7 mil for the indirect cost, can you just describe what the indirect cost is?
Absolutely.
I'll give you some exact figures if I have any. Almost 99% is...
Don't you have it broken down somewhere else? Yeah?
I have it on the next slide that I was looking at here. 1.7, excuse me, million of that is health insurance. So while our charter sending tuition has gone down, so there's some good numbers that have dropped that would have helped us in this, 1.7 million is health insurance, and then another 175 to 200,000 is probably retirement. So those negative numbers got us down to the 1737 number, health insurance.
And they have health insurance last year? That's like a 1.2 million difference.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a 24% increase.
Wow, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, yeah. Medics, I believe, went up well, and, and for teachers and retirees, it went 24%.
Thank you.
And also included in, the indirects is a per-pupil cost, there's also a school resource officer that we pay, so there's other small things, but it's health insurance.
Just to clarify on what was said, was that 24 or 20% increase, increase with health insurance?
Will you go, Mike?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was, it was 20 last year, and it was 12% for medics, 4% for death.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to be clear.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Are there any further questions? I'm here for the city council. Thank you, Dr. Pellegrino and Director Hawke for your presentation and answering our questions this evening. Hearing no further questions, we will now close this part of the meeting and reconvene at 7:30 for a regular city council meeting. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.